I see. Okay, well, Mike. Oh my gosh, really? Well, they can keep it up there. I'm sorry. Okay, it's now 6:00 PM and we're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Curtis, I'm going to set the phone down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. At 6:00 PM, we started and we opened with the Pledge of Allegiance. And you've probably all had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or any discussion that you'd like to put forth?
I have one quick, Mr. Mayor. 7A, I want to discuss with the commission in executive session.
Curtis, I don't know if you heard that, but the only, I guess, modification to the agenda as printed, legal updates, 7A, property nuisance at 307 Iowa Street. Our legal counsel has asked that we discuss that in executive session. Are you there, Curtis?
Yep, got you, Artis.
Okay, all right. Is there any other changes or additions, et cetera? If not, I need a motion to accept or approve the agenda as modified.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with 7A being in executive session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda with the change that item 7A is discussed in executive session. Is there any other discussion? So we could move it if we wanted to do that? Sure. That might make the flow a little better. What Sam just said was he's also fine with moving 7A to the end where we've got executive session if needed. So it would make it flow a little bit better than having it right there. If anybody's not got any problem with that. I guess, I don't know if we need to amend the motion before we go forward.
I'll amend my motion to move 7A of the executive session down to 12A and make 12A, 12B.
I'll still second.
Okay. An amendment is on the floor to amend the motion regarding the agenda to move item 7A down to 12A, moving 12A to 12B. Is there any other discussion?
May I ask a question? What's the statute number for that? It's not personnel.
It would be consultation with legal counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we would have that in the motion when we get there. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I will say aye board aye. But that was the amendment. Now, to approve the agenda as amended. We already have a motion and a second, but that was on the original agenda. We probably need a motion to approve the amended agenda and then a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll say.
Motion was made to approve the amended agenda and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, opposed? All right. Aye board aye. Thank you. Now we'll move on to number four, public input.
I have some public input. First thing is, I'm asking, I ask about the FOIA on the water bills. And it's my understanding that I'm not going to be given that.
Excuse me, what on the water bills?
I had sent a Freedom of Information or Sunshine for those garages, just to know if they're being supplied with water and if they're being charged with water. And it was a listing. And it's my understanding I'm not going to get that.
That is a correct assumption.
Based on?
My existing denial to you in the first letter.
And that was?
That you are not privy to customers' individual usage.
And I ex-
We have already answered that question in the first letter. And the second letter and the third letter were not any different. The request was the same.
Okay. I will be filing, so.
Just if I may, I did look at those letters. I did the review. I can't recall the specific statutory site, but I don't think the billing information and the correspondence with those people is public record or information in this context. I also didn't see any difference between the first, second, and third requests. And if I missed that, let me know. But I just, I think it was the same requests and several.
It was non-personal information. It was whether or not they had water. That was what I was looking for. No, and they're being sent out on a postcard, so it's free to everybody to see, so.
And just if I may, to answer your question a bit more directly, there's a bit of a line between a public records request, an actual document that we have, and telling you something that we might not have a record of, if that makes sense. You know what I'm saying?
I understand, but if you have a record enough to charge, then, and like I said, that particular, I'm not looking for the amount that's being charged. I'm just looking for whether or not that piece of property with that particular building on it is being charged for water. And it's a residential area, but it's a non-residential building.
Well, and I get what you're saying. That's just a little different than asking for the minutes of a council meeting or whatnot. And the only thing that we could give you, you're asking a yes or no question as opposed to being asked for a public document. The only document that the city may or may not have, I don't think we're required to give to you under statute.
Well, well.
Again, we can hash it out later. I'm just trying to flesh out your question a little bit and tell you what my thought process was.
The other thing is the golf course, I'm sorry, the golf cart ordinance. I looked through that and I checked the state statutes on golf carts. My problem is the 10-year-old drivers. We've not provided probable cause for Austin on any 10-year-old drivers on these golf carts. And it's kind of a vague ordinance that I'm reading that's being proffered tonight. And whether or not there's a penalty and how much the penalty is. And I had a question, just a general question on that, as far as that goes. Like I said, we have a lot of children driving golf carts. And they're, like I said, and I've complained in the past. They're in the cemetery, et cetera. And I went back and looked at the documentation in South Dakota statute and stuff. And you've left that up to the ordinance states, well, South Dakota statute. Okay. But it, in my mind, it needs to be a little more definite that what are you going to do with these kids when you pick them up? And they've got it loaded down with their friends. And you've got a golf cart with five or six 10-year-olds or five 10-year-olds and a three-year-old. Safety issue, and like I said, what I read of the proffered ordinance change or whatever, doesn't seem to address that. Yes.
Chief Sculler, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to read a sentence. "An operator of a golf cart shall comply with all city and state traffic rules and regulations applying to vehicles." Does that mean that they have to be licensed?
Yep.
Addresses it, thank you very much. Is there any other public input?
Oh, I have a question for the officer.
Okay. Chief Sculler, would that mean that people below the age where they would need a driver's license could operate those?
No, but it also is a fine line with, you know, can't drive on highways, can't drive on city streets. And it's a fine line because it does define that in state statute as well, so.
It does, or doesn't?
It does.
At least county roads and state highways.
So our statement that says, "Will comply with all city and state traffic rules," they got to apply, they got to comply, or else they're in violation. Fine, whatever it takes. You can't suspend some 10-year-old's license if they don't have one. But you can certainly tell mommy and daddy, keep the 10-year-old off the street with a vehicle, a motor vehicle. So, I mean, they have to comply with the city and state licensing rules, right?
Then they would also have to be insured as well, so.
And proof of insurance, if I remember accurately.
I mean, it's got teeth. It's got what it needs to keep people from doing what they're doing, if that's what you want to do. So, is there any other public input at this time?
I have some. I've been asked by several people how we're coming on advertising for an officer.
Good question.
All we have is, so far, what Austin has posted. I, it was on my agenda to get that done today, but my day has not gone as planned.
So, I mean, it's been two weeks and he's working 24/7 and that's just not okay, I don't think. I think we have to get this done. What's the deadline now for them to put? Did you put a deadline on yours?
I put until build. The only thing I've been able to do is, I think last council meeting, we asked Pat to send us an email of what she wrote.
Yes.
So then I didn't receive an email. So Tuesday, I wrote one up, got her approved by the mayor. Emailed Pat three emails with read receipts. I haven't heard back. So the only thing I have is on Facebook. I have that approved.
So yours is just on Facebook, then?
That's all I have, because.
So nothing has been really advertised?
I don't have the privy to post it on Cala Land Need or Jobs or Government Jobs as well as I want to.
The plan is probably to put it in the Argus League? Isn't that what the original plan was, Pat?
And some local papers.
South Southern Municipal League too, or?
I did get an applicant over the weekend that I will share with you.
So will that be getting done soon?
Like I said, it was my intention to do it today. I'm sorry that it didn't get done, but nothing about my day was normal today.
I just, you know.
I'm one person.
And I get that, but I also get he's one person.
He's one person that works 24/7.
Yes, yes.
For how many months now?
Yeah.
He's exhausted.
Yes. And we understand that. And that's why we want to get something done before he does, prior chief had to do.
The advertising's to go up tomorrow.
Thank you.
Curtis, by the way, one thing you might not be aware of is that Darla came in and she's now here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay. Is there any other public input?
I have been asked about the door for the liquor.
For the bar?
Yeah.
The back door of the bar?
Back door of the bar.
Good question. So am I.
I followed up with Casey last week. And Casey was going to check with the supplier to see where the door was. And the door is not in his possession yet and he's going to see when delivery. And I conveyed that to Teresa.
Okay.
But it is on order, so.
Okay.
I know for a fact or navigating anything steals, the lead times are absolutely insane.
Forget the 26-week lead times for things that we could get in three days.
Yep.
Two, three months ago. All of a sudden, six months lead time. I mean, it's ridiculous.
You can't get materials at all, so I'm sure that's where they hang up.
That's exactly right. And staffing.
Yeah.
I mean, all of a sudden, California mandates all kinds of things. And where are you going to get tips from? Silicon Valley just got shut down, you know?
Yeah. You know, I get it. I, that's what's probably my.
Yep. Is there any other public input?
I do.
Yes.
I have Chamber of Commerce Monday Night Football books for purchase if anyone would like to buy one.
And the cost?
$20 donation.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Oh, well, I got into David.
Speaking of Chamber of Commerce, I kind of fell down on the job. And I was at the, not the August Chamber of Commerce meeting, but the July meeting. And they changed the day for the Chamber of Commerce meeting from the second Wednesday to the second Tuesday. I don't know if either one of you two were aware of that before the second Tuesday already passed.
They sent out an email and there was no meeting this month.
Okay. That makes me feel a little better because all of a sudden Wednesday I went, hey, my reminder said there was a meeting and it was the day before supposedly. So, okay. Is that the plan going forward for Chamber of Commerce meetings now? It'll be on the second Tuesday instead of second month, or Wednesday? You know?
I do not know that. I just know it was a scheduling conflict this time.
We'll find that out and try to probably make that information known to you. Okay. Is there any other public input?
At the fair, when they do about the city of Alcestair that was in there, well, my mom was one of them. A gentleman from El Pointe came up to her and said he purchased a home, I think I got all this right, in El Pointe. But in the attic, there is a bunch of information on the first, I don't know what you would call it, abstracts, some history of Alcestair. He said it's never seen the light. It's in that kind of shape. He has sold some of his stuff to other things, but the way this is understood, he would give it to the city of Alcestair if we wanted.
I think it'd be wise to get it even for.
My mom says, can you find out so I don't have him keep calling me? So I don't know it, she has the name, I can find the name out. But he said he thinks the Alcestair, city of Alcestair would be very interested in it. So you want me to pursue the name and see? I don't have any idea what it is. Comes way back from Hyden District up there. It's something with, I don't know. But he thinks that we would be very interested.
I think it might even make some good news.
So I'll tell her to give me the name and go from there. Otherwise, I was going to say, forget it. You know, he wants to know.
Oh, and he said he was going to give it to us. He wasn't going to try to sell it.
That's what I said to her. Are you sure he doesn't want to sell it? She said, the way he sounded, you know, he's selling other stuff.
I think it'd be a good idea for us to get it and for no other reason to try to preserve it.
Right.
Maybe it's not preservable. Maybe it's shot to the point where.
I don't know.
But I mean, the Dead Sea Scrolls were preserved to a certain extent, so we can do what we can.
So I'll tell her to give me the number and then maybe we can. I don't know what his name was.
Cool. Good idea. Speaking of, wow, I think we'll.
We need somebody to go get it. I can make a trip down.
I'll find out who he is and what we can do.
Contact information.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other public input? Hearing none. We'll go on to number five, wastewater facility plan.
So the person we had here is Leslie. She's from Seacog.
I'm going to talk behind your back. You don't mind, do you?
No. Leslie, it's Maestro Antoni, Maestro, Mastro Antoni?
I've heard a lot of versions and I don't. Matriati.
Matriati. Nice. Okay.
It's a fine Irish name. Which is, my maiden name is Irish, so that's.
That's good.
So I am a planner with Seacog. And I've been with Seacog for almost six years, even though today it feels like 42 because it was a really long day today. Don't know why, but weather's good. So we started talking a week or so ago about your funding package for the utility improvements that you were awarded. Gosh, it would have been, what, in March, perhaps? You received the award. So as your package stands, I can't speak to the actual nuts and bolts of the project because I have really no idea what you plan on doing with the money. I'm sure it's going to go to a worthy project. Tanya has all those specifics. But for the funding, you were awarded 3.7 million, which is the amount that you need to pay for your engineering, some testing, your legal, which is bond counsel, and your construction. So DNR, or D A N R, they changed their name, award gave you a fantastic funding package. I mean, I remember I was listening to the meeting through the computer.
Zoom, yep.
And when they said what your principal forgiveness was, I almost fell off my chair.
Yeah, me too.
Very, very impressive. So you received all told, I don't think, oh, 71.5% principal forgiveness. So in essence, of a $3.7 million project, you guys will be borrowing, your ultimate loan amount will be about $1 million, which is pretty fantastic. In the meantime, or previous to that, the city had also applied for community development block grant funds, or CDBG. Excuse me. The intent, the original intent way back when, was that you would combine a CDBG award and an SRF award to total that 3.7 million dollars. The advantage to CDBG funding is it's 100% grant. There's no loan component to it at all. So that would have been a pretty sweet deal, too. At the time, you applied for CDBG back in April. And when they received the application and saw what the timeline was going to be, that you hadn't even applied for SRF funding yet, they felt that there was going to be too much time elapsing between the time of approval and the time where it would begin, which is, it is what it is. But the state is under some timing, funding constraints of its own because they get that money from HUD. And the feds say you've got to get this out on the streets and get it put to use in a timely manner. So that's why your CDBG application was denied, just because of that long timeframe. So fast forward to now. Another CDBG funding round is coming up October 1st. There's been discussion of should you, do you want to, is it a good idea? What do you want to do? Apply for CDBG funding to go toward this same $3.7 million project? Now, at first, Rob, you know, if you do the mental math, after the principal forgiveness, you owe, or your loan amount will be about $1 million. Throw $750,000 of CDBG money on top of that, this grant, that would reduce your loan to $250,000. That won't happen. But it's like, yeah, why not apply for it? So I did a quick down and dirty, and Pat said she made a copy and put it in your packet. So hopefully you have it because I don't have it on El Pointe or anything. I'm fancy. But if we could apply for CDBG funding and put it toward the construction and influence that package with the infusion of those grant funds, a risk we only have to take is that DNR will turn around and say, well, you got $750,000 in grant. Now we're going to take that, 750,000 of our principal forgiveness. So, you know, we've thrown this around, we've tossed it upside down, we've thought about it. And you know what? It's not my decision. It's not Kristen's decision. Who's the other planner I'm working with? It's not anybody's decision except your decision whether you want to apply for CDBG funding now to go toward this $2.3 million project. I'll give you some pros and cons. Well, first, if, best case scenario, best case scenario, you would end up dropping your loan amount by about 200,000. So it's not a dollar for dollar, you jump a reduction at 750. So that's one thing to keep in mind. It won't have any, that additional 750,000 won't have any impact on the rates, the surcharge that DNR said you had to add to your utility bills. If there was one, if I'm speaking out of skill to shoot.
There is. It was $10.
Okay. You'll still have to keep that on there even with the CDBG money because that was a condition of your funding. So it won't impact your rates at all by lowering them or obviously raising them. They. So with CD, if you keep it as it is now, just the SRF funding, you can be ready to go out for bid as soon as design is complete. Now, I'm going to speak for Tanya and I'm generalizing. But typically, we like to put projects out for bid December, January as contractors are lining up their work for the next year. And particularly now because I suspect there's going to be a lot more work, a lot more projects coming out this next year because of the recovery money and other COVID-related money. It's best to get out there and get on the contractor's schedule. You usually get better prices. They can start ordering materials and there usually isn't a delay. There is a likelihood that DNR will turn around and reduce your principal forgiveness so that it'll end up raising your loan amount. And I don't know. They never, they never tell us upfront. It's gambling, basically. Do you gamble and hope they don't raise your, or reduce your principal forgiveness? I don't know. If we go with the CDBG and your principal forgiveness remains the same, your loan amount's going to be reduced by a little over $200,000. The bid period, open window. open window will be pushed back till later, late spring. Because the apps are due October first, they make decisions in December. And so by the time we complete all of our closing procedures, we have to do an environmental report and some other things, publications, it takes a while, so at least it would be probably end of March before we could go out for bid, which means your opening will be in April. And are you gonna get good prices? Are you gonna get?
It's all a gamble, really.
It is, you know, it is. I would say are you gonna get your good contractors, but I know of a really good contractor that just bid on the job about it, so I can't say that all the good ones are spoke it for. So it's really up to you, and then as I was driving down here, I had thought, if, because there's the recovery funds that are gonna be out there, which will probably, don't quote me, I'll deny it. Like I can deny I said something with a lot of witnesses, but I believe that that'll come in the form of principal forgiveness through DNR. When, I don't know, it could, it may not be until the April funding cycle, but that's either here or there. But there's gonna be a lot of recovery money, plus the infrastructure bill, if that passes, who knows where that money will go to? Do you have additional work that you wanna do in the city in the next year, year and a half, two years? In addition to what you've been funded, or what you receive funding for?
Well, there's another whole B version of this coming. Now, you said two years, it might be four, it might be five, but I mean, I don't know how long it's gonna be, but there's more work to this project.
That's what I was kinda hoping you would say there was. My recommendation? My recommendation is to, this is kind of aside from this subject. I would go ahead and put that project on the state water plan in October. Even though, and you'll have two years to apply. Even though you may think it's four years old, by George, if that recovery money is there and available, jump on it.
Get it done, exactly.
And you can't apply unless you're on the state water plan.
Well, that's something we'd have to talk to Tanya about, to make sure that she was prepared.
This project's on the state water.
Right, let's be prepared to put Schedule Two, or whatever, whatever that.
Phase two.
Yeah.
Phase two?
That's it, phase, phase two of the project needs to be accelerated and prepared, so that we can get it on soon.
Yeah, we're gonna have an informational meeting with Tanya, Tanya next week.
Okay. I'll, I meant to call her today, and again, it was one of those days where... Is there a folder? Anyway. So another thought is to... Typically, GOED doesn't like to have two CDBG projects open at the same time. Sometimes they'll let a seasoned community, like Vermillion, they have a track record of receiving CDBG money, and so they may grant them a waiver and let them have two open projects. But I think it would be risky to try and ask for CDBG money in the near future, if you're, if we apply again, you know? So you could wait and ask for, not do CDBG now, but do it, say, in April.
For Phase Two.
Exactly. You do not have to decide in the next three and a half minutes. Because if you're like me, you gotta think about this. There is no... There's... Before we could apply for CDBG, if we do it in, by October first, you would have to have a public hearing, again. And we could do that in, at your September meeting. As long as you decide ten days prior to your September meeting.
And publish accordingly.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the two boxes that are at the bottom of the page that I believe she's referring to here, Leslie, those are the ones you said, SRF only, and then CDBG with SRF awarded in December. There's where the gamble is, we're locked into seventy-one point five percent principal forgiveness of that entire three million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar project right now. So we get it if we just stick with box number one. But if we opt to go with box number two, we're risking, I mean, a number of different things. Now, just, it so happens that the stars might align, and it might turn out to be really, really good. Or not. So, in a nutshell, that's what we're talking about, and as far as the resolution goes, does that specifically state?
The reason we have that again is, this is what starts the application process for CDBG. So if the council decides that you want to apply for a CDBG fund, or grant, this is the same resolution we did a year ago, and then submitted our application.
I should probably say, too, it makes me crazy, but you can always, you can back out of it up until the day you receive a grant agreement in the mail.
So you, you apply for CDBG, and they say, sure, yeah, we'll give you seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And then we go, wait a minute, that's gonna actually cost us money in the long run, we decline.
Yep.
Everything's fine, we're back to seventy-one point five percent principal forgiveness, and
Yep.
We go on from there.
And if Tanya keeps working on design for, I'll call it Phase One, this, this phase that's been funded, if she keeps working on design, which she will, because she knows it's a done deal, you've got the money, that three point seven million. So even if we receive notice of award, and they don't fund you, or you decline it, we can still go out for bid in January. If you decide to accept CDBG in January, that's when the clock, that's when it's, we have to push things back, and that's where things can change. So it's entirely up to you guys. I can say that, because I won't be the one writing the application. I can three of them if you want.
Well, so in essence, you guys already know the project's scope and the design, design discussion points she brought up, the financing discussion, and the grant versus CDBG, or principal forgiveness versus CDBG. I guess, I don't know if anybody's got any other questions regarding this, or whether we should move on to the motion regarding Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of a bird in the hand guy. I'd like to stick with the seventy-one and a half percent principal forgiveness.
And maybe consider CDBG for Phase Two.
For the second, Phase Two, yes. Since, since the, the chance of having two CDBG.
Elemental P, whatever, yeah.
Grants awarded at the same time.
Yeah, I agree, I, I think that's good thinking, but... Anybody else have thoughts? Curtis, by the way, is no longer on the phone, and he said, bad reception area, don't bother to call.
I, I agree with you.
Me too. Well, in that case...
So I don't get to go back and tell Kirsten, she has, man.
She doesn't have to go through all this.
Well, this is what I'll do, I will talk to Tanya, and before you guys meet next week, and I'll again, reiterate about this recovery money, Phase Two, and then we'll kind of move forward. And otherwise, we'll just move forward with the first phase here, and it'll be good.
Yeah, the, the other thing that kinda pushed me over the edge was the fact that we could let bids earlier.
That's true.
Otherwise, we're gonna be sixty to ninety days delayed.
We already got material issues. So I was telling an engineer earlier today, I said, jeez, you would have thought, with this beautiful weather, construction weather we've had all summer, I mean, it's been beautiful, very little rain for construction.
Sure.
That we would be well ahead of the game, but materials.
You can't build what you don't have to put together.
Can't get them, I almost started digging stuff up out of my own yard, just to get some of these projects going, but I wouldn't have them, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, we could, we could push this resolution back a year or two? Or do we still need to do that?
Well, I, I think that it would be wise to do it.
No, you'll have to do one of these when you're ready.
Oh, for the CDBG part?
Right.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Prior to the next.
I understand. So letter C is the moot point. Well, Leslie?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I may be back, you never know.
Yeah.
I just keep turning up wherever I, my GPS leads me, so. You guys have a great, great week.
You too.
You too, thank you.
You too. And now we're gonna move on to medical cannabis, that'll be fun.
Yeah, that would be.
There's an awful lot of things around about that. As a matter of fact, Zuvol just recently posted their ordinance online, and they said, anybody that's interested in looking at it, they could certainly do so, and I read through that, and they're allowing five dispensaries in, in, in obviously, we don't need five. I'm not saying we need one, but we can't say zero, so the best thing we can do is say one.
So ordinance number twenty twenty-one sixteen is the ordinance dealing with the licensing, and ordinance number twenty twenty-one seventeen deals with zoning.
So, licensing is two zero two one dash one six, zoning is two zero two one dash one seven. I don't know what discussion we have to have. Sam has done due diligence regarding these. I don't know, if you, if you watch the ad, our governor does a great job of saying, we purposefully have kind of slowed this process down to see whether we could eliminate some of the mistakes that other states have made in the past, and hopefully not make some of those same mistakes, and do it right the first time, so to speak. I don't know, I, I think we're trying to be as cautious as we can be, but I think we better get with the program, or we're gonna wish we had, because one is gonna become whatever number, I don't know what it is. But we won't be allowed to limit it if we don't move forward, so. I don't know if anybody's got any discussion points they wanna bring up regarding either sixteen or seventeen, the zoning or the licensing, but...
I have one question. Sam, under ordinance sixteen, the second page, section four oh four oh four, it says that the license will be made on a form provided by the state. Going to do a generalized form, like the alcohol licenses or liver licenses?
I haven't heard of anybody of the state doing that, I don't, that doesn't mean that they're not gonna, I just have.
Okay.
Would it be quite easy to take the alcohol, liver?
That would be my bad unless.
I can find out, I'm, I'm positive that the state isn't gonna come up with one, there's another municipality or five that are probably working on the same one.
It seems like they would want consistent ones.
I would think so, too. Is the alcohol form that we use consistent with other municipalities?
Yes, we all have the same.
I think that makes perfect sense.
And it's provided by the state.
Kind of difficult to believe that somebody in the state isn't already working on it, if it's not already done.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if that's available.
Yes.
Is there gonna be like any background checks or anything like that through this application, are we just gonna let any Joe smoke get?
No, I, I think it's, I mean, I think it's similar, I'm not gonna say it's exactly the same, but I think it's similar to a liquor license, you know? You can't withhold a liquor license from somebody that doesn't have issues. If they apply, and there's no reason not to give them the license, you gotta give them the license, it's against the law to withhold it.
There is, four oh four oh five, it does talk about if you've been convicted of a violent felony offense in the previous ten years.
That also's gotta be in your application to Austin, you gotta, you gotta provide a sworn statement that no principal, officer, owner, or board member, so anybody in your company. I don't have a memorized chapter in verse, but the state, not only do they have to apply for a city license, but they've gotta work with the state as well, the state requirements are pretty robust. Kind of in things you're talking about.
So it's a good question, just any Tom, Dick, or Harry can't get a medical cannabis license.
And that is a question on the alcohol license as well, have you ever been?
Good question. Any other discussion?
I did wanna mention, so the licensing ordinance is, is pretty, gonna be pretty uniform across the state, unless three municipalities have changed. The only difference ours with respect to a lot of other cities is just the numbering, because it's not gonna slide into the very end of our licensing provisions for licenses we already give out. The one that's a little bit more unique is the zoning ordinance. They have a number of other, if you look at the definition section toward the back, cannabis establishments, cannabis products, testing facilities, et cetera, those are other things that they've defined, and as I've written this ordinance for you, they're elected to only allow cannabis dispensaries. So we are not allowing a testing facility, a grow house, things like that, that's important because the way they've set up statute rule, you can't kinda have an all-in-one shop. You can't grow, test, cultivate, refine, and then sell. Dispensary is, is, think more of a pharmacy than, you know, a cradle to grave in terms of manufacturing. The other thing that, that you folks should consider, and now, so you can... The other thing that, that you folks should consider and, you know, now, so you can start down the timeline for public notice, public hearing notice and all that stuff for the zoning ordinance is right now, I have placed two places where we would, in theory, allow a business if it meets criteria for licensing, and that is the central business district and then the highway commercial district. And I, I should have maybe asked Pat to print a city map for us all, but essentially what that means is downtown and then by Total Stop, there's a little spot that's across the street to the east from Total Stop that is Highway Commercial and then north in the undeveloped industrial park and Highway Commercial is also the golf course here. So you don't have to. Those were just the two spots on the map that I thought probably would be the best fit for this. The ordinance also says we've got to be a thousand feet from a school, so those, those areas meet that criteria. You folks are free to, you know, change that as you want, but it was just the best I came up with on the map.
And the hours you put in was eight to eight, and I don't know if you feel comfortable with those hours. I think eight o'clock is good, I just didn't know if eight o'clock at night is good for a closing time.
Really doesn't matter.
For medical.
Yeah.
I would think eight, eight should be fine.
I think it is.
I think I also, I put in, I think one.
Okay, well, we've got two separate ordinances. I'm going to, I'm going to just start with 2021-16 regarding the licensing. I don't know if there's any other discussion, but if there is no other discussion, we need a motion, a second, and a vote to go forward with that ordinance.
This is the first reading?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-16 and ordinance amending city vows to revise municipal ordinances, Title IV, licenses by adding Chapter 4.04, which enacts licensing provisions for cannabis establishments and for the repeal of all resolutions and ordinances in conflict therewith. Second.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I, I should have interrupted Dave, I'm sorry. We can move forward with, with this one here, but I think it makes more sense to, the timeline the municipal league had given is that later than August 21st, you have public hearing notice published, joint public hearing of your, because we are one of those cities that our commission is the planning committee, the zoning committee, vice versa, joint public hearing on August 31st and first reading of the zoning ordinance. If I make more sense to have a first reading of both of those at the same time, second reading September 7th, publish the ordinances on the 14th, and then everything would be in effect October 4th. Just for ease, more than anything, administrative ease for publishing, so if we, we do one publication, two ordinances, they're all going at the same time.
So the motion that he needs to make tonight is for a public hearing on August 31st?
Yes, all that to say would, it would be that we, you could move to have a special joint public hearing of the planning commission of the city council. Sorry, I won't tell you that.
I don't have time to publish that.
You, if, yeah, you can publish it for the public hearing, you can publish by, you have to publish notice of a public hearing by, for the planning commission by August 21st.
My paper, it's too late to get it in the paper, so it will be published on August 26th.
Okay.
So if, as soon as, is it 10 days then or five?
It's 10.
Okay, so. So we could have a public hearing on September 7th, the next council meeting.
Okay, that would be your first reading?
That would be the public hearing and first reading, yes.
Or if I may add, you do it by section 3.
Your order, the goal is to have the ordinances in effect by October 4th. The reason for this is there's going to be a public hearing on the proposed rules and they will become effective sometime after October 4th. And this is the, this is the state cannabis. The goal is to have the ordinance in effect prior to the, prior to the enactment of the state.
Yeah, because I just don't want us to get messed up.
No, I don't either.
That, that's something I'm concerned about. We've got five of the six council members here right now. It, it doesn't always end up this way. All of a sudden, and frankly, it sounds like a typhoid ward in here tonight. People are sneezing and coughing and choking, so anything could happen anytime. So don't we need to do something before it's a little too late?
I don't know how else we can do it because, so I take the announcement to the paper tomorrow, it'll be published on the 26th. So 10 days after published date is Sunday, September 5th, which we are having our meeting on the 7th. And I know to do a second reading, it only has to be five days later. So we could do a meeting, a special meeting just for the second reading of these two on the 13th. And it's still going to be tight on publication because it won't go to publication and... I, I could see if I could get it there after the meeting on the 13th to get it in the paper on the 16th. We're a Thursday paper, Monday deadline.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I see, the best we can do.
That's, we will, that's what we should do then, try to make sure we can.
Okay.
So my motion doesn't need a second?
Well, it already does have a second, but in order for us to really deal with this, the motion needs to be voted on because the motion is on the floor. So...
Who, who gave the second?
Brian.
Thank you.
So, letter 6B, licensing ordinance 2021-16, which I'm not going to read again...
Okay.
Is on the floor, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion at this time? Hearing none. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Linda?
So we don't want to approve this, though, right? So I want to say nay.
Dave?
No.
Dara? Brian?
Nay.
Cindy? 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 Whatever, yeah. Five, no. Motion did not pass, and we will go on and we will not worry about letter 6B either right now because we're going to be dealing with that at the same time.
But you will need a motion to set a public hearing for the planning and commission hearing for the zoning aspect of it, and you will have to have a motion to set a public hearing for the licensing, or no, just, just zoning, right?
Just the zoning.
Right.
Okay.
You can have the readings, that's what I was saying, you can have the readings the same time, but we'll just have to have a public hearing on the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so we need a motion for a public, for the, for the planning and zoning commission to hold a public hearing.
And the most logical date for that would be the 13th of September, am I correct?
No, it says seven.
Okay. So it's the first meeting in September.
And you will also have to have a second motion that will do a public hearing for the city council to hear the rezoning. Because you, as a commission, will have a public hearing, you will discuss with any public members, and then you will make a, you will approve, the city councils will approve this zoning change.
And both of those public hearings could be the same night?
Yes, we just need to separate them with time.
Understood. They both could be September 7th. There are two separate public hearings, one for the zoning commission, one for the city council to review...
So the zoning one has to be first because you, acting as planning and zoning commissioners, make the recommendation that the city council adopt said ordinance.
To review ordinance 2021-17. 2021-16 will be dealt with the same nights, but it is not necessarily exactly the same situation. The zoning needs a public hearing.
What kind of a timeline, 45 minutes in between? Is it going to be enough for a public...
Well, if, if it only takes 15 minutes or 20 minutes or something, we'll just wait for the second one, we'll do other stuff, and then we'll come back to it. So, sure, 45 minutes is a good number, I'd say. So I need a motion and a second and a vote to have the public hearing for zoning logically on September 7th sometime.
Say like 6:15?
I like that. Any discussion?
Is that actually a motion?
I haven't heard a motion yet. Any discussion? If not, I need a motion to do what we're talking about.
I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing for the planning and zoning commission on September 7th at 6:15 p.m. Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded regarding having a public hearing for zoning, the zoning commission on September 7th at 6:15 p.m. Excuse me. Is there any discussion?
So people ask us, "What is this for? We just say medical marijuana?"
Right.
That, that's what we say.
It's actually, the, the public hearing is for the zoning portion. Basically, you're telling people, "We're trying to establish that we're not going to have a medical dispensary in the parking lot of the school."
Right.
It's illegal to have it there, and, and it may be not right next to a church, it may be not right next to a daycare, you know? So zoning, making sure that they're in appropriate places, really.
I think there's going to be a meeting they're going to ask.
Yep, absolutely.
So you're, by this zoning ordinance number 17, which I will put on the website...
Okay.
Either tonight or tomorrow, you're setting up downtown and on Highway 11.
All right. I just want to be straight on that.
Yes.
More than a thousand feet away from the school. Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. I'm just going to say, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Say five voted yes. Now, we also need to have a motion and a second to have a public hearing the same night, approximately 7:00 p.m. That's a good number, I like that number, but it doesn't have to be, for the city council to act upon any recommendation that the zoning commission makes regarding the earlier public hearing. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, I need a motion and a second, and we need to vote.
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing at 7:00 p.m. on September 7th for the city council to consider the recommendations of the zoning, planning and zoning commission.
I'll second you.
Motion has been made and seconded for the... Public hearing to be held on September 7th at 7:00 p.m. for the city council to consider and act upon the zoning commission's recommendations from the earlier public hearing at 6:15 that same night. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Thank you. So, takes care of six. Now we move on to number seven. We are, well, yeah, we are moving seven, eight. So we'll start with seven, B, ordinance 2021-11. Having to do with golf carts. I know the chief was here, he left, but he, he did state that that line at the end...
Bless you.
That line at the end does put some teeth into this. It means that we're going to have an awful lot of parents that are going to be really, really tickled pink that little Johnny or little Jamie gets in trouble with, or their little buddies, but, I mean, it's a safety issue. I don't care what anybody says, so.
Do we need to specifically spell out that operators of golf carts need a valid driver's license and proof of insurance?
No, no. I, I, you certainly could, I don't think you do. It's, it's, in my view, redundant to repeat state law in, in our, in our ordinance. This is just telling them, this is telling people where you can drive them, you know, we're authorized in that, you still got to be able to drive, or to drive.
So, this again is the first reading of ordinance 2021-11. I don't know how much more discussion we need to have, but if there is no other discussion, we need a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll approve. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
No, you have to say the last.
Oh, I have to do the whole thing again. I have to do that. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-11, dash 11. An ordinance amend the revised municipal ordinance of the city of Alcestra, South Dakota, Title VII, traffic code chapter 7.09, golf cart section 7.0902.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded regarding ordinance 2021-11, and she read off the title exactly as it is printed on the page. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes.
Right, it is five days. Are we in the second or first?
First and second. The next one is ordinance 2021-12, and it has to do with parking, specifically trailers and prohibited places to park trailers. I don't know if there needs to be any other discussion. We did have some last meeting regarding contractors, et cetera. Don't know where we stand on that, but... Need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2021-12, an ordinance amending the revised municipal ordinances of the city of Alcestor, South Dakota, Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05, Parking, Stopping, Section 7.0501, Parking Prohibited in Certain Places.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance 2021-12, read exactly as it is stated on the document. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion passes. Ordinance number 2021-13, offenses, and specifically the penalty, that's where this, it's, it's putting a little bit of teeth in for the officers to enforce ordinances, any ordinance that has a, I mean, a violation of any ordinance, basically, so... I don't know if there's any discussion. If there is no discussion further, we need a motion to approve the second reading of that ordinance.
Second, okay.
That's what it said, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2021-13, an ordinance amending the revised municipal ordinances of the city of Alcestor, South Dakota, Title V, Offenses, Chapter 5.01, Offenses Against Public Welfare, Section 5.0108, Penalty.
Second. On the, on the minutes or on the agenda, it says 5.01085. I don't think that's supposed to have a five at the end.
No, I mean, the ordinance is right.
The ordinance printed is correct, but, and you read it correctly. Just to make sure that you've got your notes correct. Brian, that was you that seconded, okay? Is there, uh, I'm sorry, a motion's been made and seconded regarding ordinance number 2021-13, read exactly as it is written on the page. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion passes. Then go on to ordinance 2021-15, and that's zoning board of adjustment regarding variances, and I don't know how to word it any better than to say, making variances more logically accessible. So, I don't know if there's any discussion at this time? If not, I would need a motion, second and a vote for that ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021-15, an ordinance amending 2018 Revised Alcestor City Zoning Regulations, Chapter 15, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Section 15.04, Variances.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance 2021-15, and the ordinance was read exactly as it is stated on the document. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so this is update, up, update, excuse me, of Title III.
Oh, that's, that is not done.
Collection of garbage. Letter F, not prepared for tonight's discussion. How about letter G, resolution? That would be 2021-18. Excuse me just a moment. Okay, sorry about that. Letter G, uh, it's actually Resolution 20, I'm gonna write that down, 2021-18, regarding the Personnel Policy Manual.
This, what this is, is that employees may borrow against due to accrual vacation, but just not more than what they agree to any pay period.
What is the most that they need to approve in the pay period?
Four point six nine hours.
How many?
Four point six nine.
So I think we're gonna have to take this one. So Brian, you were out when she mentioned it, but this Resolution 2021-18, or 18, is regarding the fact that an employee could borrow, except, they can only borrow up to one pay period's worth of accrued vacation time.
Correct.
Which equals no more than four point, oh, I forgot, six nine?
Six nine.
Four point six nine dollars is the maximum so far. Less than or equal to four point six nine hours. Okay, well, um, you see the motion, or, excuse me, you see the resolution, I would need a motion unless there's more discussion, I should say.
And, and this is for the, just for the police?
This is all...
I think it's for all employees.
All employees.
All employees who receive benefits.
Who receive benefits?
Who receives vacation.
But the third paragraph has Alcestor Police Policy Manual. So the word police should be struck?
Right.
Wow, good. Yeah, bless you.
Well, with that change, do I need to specify that change?
No, I'll, I'll modify that.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-18, Resolution of the City of Alcestor, Amending Policy 7.2, the City of Alcestor Personnel Manual, 2020 addition.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2021-18, read exactly as it is on the page, obviously with one minor change, the elimination of the word police in the third paragraph. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Last meeting, we kinda started this conversation that the chair, people, chairpersons of the individual committees responsible for these various, these various parts of the city would try to help us understand what's going on out there.
Can I make a suggestion that we don't have to do this at both meetings in the month?
Oh, that's a very good suggestion.
Just one meeting, and I kinda like this one, because usually this one's a little shorter.
The second meeting would be...
That's, I don't know, can we do that?
The only thing I would say is to keep it on the agenda. If you have nothing to report, you don't say anything.
Okay, okay.
The only reason that I would keep it on the agenda is if something would come on, you gotta raise, talk about it.
Not, not a bad idea, you at least have it on there.
Okay.
In which case, then, I'm just going to say, does anybody have anything for the street department?
I do. I talked to Lonnie and everything is going good, he said.
Oh, good. How about the pool?
I haven't been there, but it's empty.
Boy, it's empty.
Yes, I said that. There's water standing down below us.
I walked out the door tonight, I looked out, I went...
Did I go to the school?
Beautiful pools.
Not, not needed this year, Dave, not needed this year, we followed the school.
I saw the football team there last week.
Right. Um, Lonnie...
They actually were playing football in the pool, that was kinda fun to watch.
Lonnie drained it down to maybe check for the leak we possibly have in the liner, so he wanted to get that done as soon as possible.
Good. How about the cemetery?
Well, it hasn't been remedied. We did finally get it mowed, but it took like eighteen hours. Just mow.
Well, I went out there the other day, and I was out mowing, um, but I guess I never went back, I should've gone back later on.
I went out there today, it needs to be remedied.
Well, I think that we need to just have a conversation with him. Probably not the most fun job, but...
No, I'm sure not.
There are a lot of things in jobs that are not all that much fun, so... Let's move on to water slash wastewater.
You're not gonna like what I heard. The pipes at the bottom of the tower are rusted, and he had someone, whoever's been working with him come, he's gonna give him a hard estimate. They're going to move the pipes up, they're afraid if they got hit, they would just burst, right now they're that rusted. So they're gonna move them up above ground, he gave him a ballpark figure of sixty thousand dollars. Yeah, that's what I, I asked him again, what did you say, sixty thousand?
Maybe we should have somebody else reporting this stuff from now on, so we don't hear news like that.
Sorry. I could've foregone on that one, I shouldn't stop to talk to Dale today. But he's, you know, he's afraid, he said it might go a long time, you don't know.
Well, yeah.
But it might just burst, and then we're gonna have a real disaster, he said. It's the pipes coming in, he said.
The middle underground corrodes at a crazy rate of freezing, thawing, freezing, thawing, changes in moisture, humidity.
Water moving through it, yeah.
Yeah, it corrodes fast, I mean, so if it's bad now, it's not gonna take long.
So the positive note on that...
Okay, good.
Is, this type of a project was one that I'm gonna submit for the new set of funding that is coming available to cities. This would be appropriate project for it.
Well, that's good.
Well, so that's not...
Quite so bad.
As bad, might not be as bad as...
Yeah, it's still expensive.
Would we want to have Dale come and explain this?
I'm sure he would, yes, he would. So, if you've ever been in that little pump house, um...
The pump house, what's that?
Community center.
Okay.
That's where South Lincoln Real Water feeds in, and that's where the controls are, and that's how we know where it is in the water tower, and what kind of flow rate we have, and so on and so forth. And when we had that water issue earlier this year, um, that is what alerted us, because it's been more time than that pump house. And for the three weeks or so we were waiting on that part, we were doing it manually, Dale would open it in the morning, I would show it at night, so we got very comfortable in that pump house. But, um, the house needs to be updated. In the wintertime, we put a space heater in there to alleviate any chance of freezing or anything that is not good. It needs to be insulated, and again, these valves that we are exercising will be brought up above ground, and they, we will also replace the valve, because it is old, and it is showing signs of rust.
So it's not, it's not the entire pipes from there to the water tower?
No, it's, it's the whole meter, yeah. It's, as far as...
Every single, that little house.
Yeah.
So, you know, sleeve some lines, is it possible to sleeve, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here, if that's rusty, what about the lines that are going from that pump house to the water tower, et cetera? I mean, can they sleeve those?
I'm not sure, because you're dealing with drinking water and not wastewater, I know you can sleeve wastewater.
Right.
You're dealing with the... Type thing. But I'm not sure about the, the condition of the line, what we're talking about is the connections to the pump. So, and the valves, the valves.
Well, hopefully this individual that's gonna provide this hard estimate will know the answer to a lot of those questions, because, I mean, I would suspect all of them, I mean, why are they replacing lines all over the place, but they're old, and, you know, so...
That I don't know, I know they have like a ten, twenty million dollar project, South Lincoln. I know some of it that South Lincoln is doing is removing lines from abandoned or non-passable minimum maintenance roads, and putting them on loads that are still active.
Can I interrupt, are they currently insulated, or are they just in the pump house?
I'm sorry?
The lines that are, that we're worried about that are rusting right now, in the pump house, are they insulated as well as being inside the pump house?
The pipe itself is not, right?
A majority of it is underground, so, you know, I, I can't see that, the part that we see is where the valves are.
Right, and that's just...
And that is the area of concern.
I wonder if we could heat trace that, in addition to that heater, because if it's rusty now, would they freeze where it will?
Are we gonna have to rip up some of our asphalt that's gonna go down in ten days?
Um, I, I don't think so, because the water line was rerouted from around, we, around the cart shed to that building, and then it goes from that building to the water tower.
So how does it get to the water tower, does it actually go in diagonal fashion?
Highway 11 to the ballpark, or Highway 11 north of town.
No, I mean from the pump house to the water tower. Does it go under my property, does it go under the street?
I'm gonna say that it is the path of least resistance to the water tower.
Diagonally.
Or down, down the street.
In other words, we're just gonna put a whole bunch, well, they're gonna put a whole bunch of new street down, and we'll have to tear that up. But hopefully that won't be for a long time.
Just my trot box.
That was one of the reasons why I was even asking about this, from the pump house to the water tower. I mean, if, if our government is willing to put us trillions of dollars in debt further, and if we're gonna do that, we may as well get something for it, let's put new line in all the way from the pump house to the water tower, too. If money's there, get her done.
I'm assuming we'll work out the recommendation on the person ordering it.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is some, I think somebody should put a bug in his ear and say, did you think about from here to there, what about that? Because, I mean, we've put sixty thousand dollars into here, and even if it's free, we've still got sixty thousand dollars or more worth of other to do after the fact. I'm just, like I say, I'm playing devil's advocate here, so, something to think about. Any other water, wastewater? How about police? I kinda wish that Chief Scullers' mom, I think she probably had some input and she did provide a little bit of input there earlier. Obviously, uh, everybody's concerned about the chief. We need to, we need to get that ad done.
And I, I go back to the three, four months ago when we had two police officers on staff. When they get to the point where their forty hours, when their forty hours of on-call time are up, why are they not shutting their phone off and allowing the county sheriff to cover police action here?
It's a good question. I asked the chief that same question and one of the things that he mentioned was that he wasn't really interested in burning that bridge, which to me, I don't think that's burning a bridge. I think it's just asking for the support that's necessary to keep somebody from going stark raving mad.
My thing, um, I just wanna also put it out there though. How would you, or anybody like it, if it was you on the end, something terrible's happening to you and you're the one that he doesn't respond to?
Yeah, I know.
'Cause, um, you wouldn't like it if you're the one that he's not gonna respond to.
That's right there. It's the whole, the whole problem.
The thing is, is everybody's quick to say, "Why doesn't he put his call down?" He cares so much about this computer, community. And all anybody seems to think is, "Well, he doesn't have to answer this call." Yeah, he doesn't have to answer the calls. He doesn't have to, but he cares so much about this community that he, he answers them, even the stupid ones, like a pig. I mean, the, the priorities sometimes are not put in perspective. And there are times where maybe he shouldn't respond, yes. But there are times where he answers the calls. Okay? And, and there are times, maybe he shouldn't respond and he should let him. But are you the one that, that he does that to?
Yeah.
Would you want it to be you and you have to wait? Because you know that they spend most of their time, everybody has said, they spend most of their time at the dunes.
Of course. But I gotta tell you, no matter what, we don't want him to go just one minute too long and pull his gun and shoot somebody and have it...
I agree. I completely agree.
Or have somebody shoot him because he was, he was so tired that he could not respond fast enough. And he's dead.
I know, I agree. No, I agree, but we should have, we should have already been looking at police officers.
Well...
She said they got another one.
I, I think we've got three or four, I thought, already.
One of them is...
Okay, well, we don't need to get into that discussion, but...
No, I, I understand and I agree.
We'll get the ad out and we'll...
So how long did you say we have to, that you usually run that ad?
In the August is thirty days.
So we have to wait thirty days before we can start?
You have to wait until you can start interviewing whenever you get an incident that you wanna talk to.
The ad might go in for thirty days, but we can say that it's cut off two weeks from tomorrow, whenever the ad is...
Position's open until Phil.
Well, there you go.
And that's what you put in there until Phil?
That's what will be in there, yes.
Okay. That's a good point though, Cindy. I think it's a very good point. And, and I would not like to be the one that says, "Well, Little Johnny's, you know, trying to beat up Little Janie here. We gotta get here. Bless you."
You know, at the, at the fair, there was one fight and the kid ended up getting a concussion.
There, there were all kinds of...
There was other cops around.
There were all kinds of officers there.
But nobody was around when this happened. It was over, I think, right by our shop in that area because that's where the firemen were and the firemen came over and got Austin.
I do think that, that we should, I think he should take a day.
Absolutely.
I honestly, I do think he needs...
I thought maybe he took a day last week. Did he?
I think he did.
He didn't work the weekend.
That's what I was thinking, maybe.
I think he's going every other weekend where he does not work.
So at least he's getting some time off.
He, he didn't work forty this week, is, I, I can tell you that. This last week, excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the library.
I have on my hand an envelope from Cosette Heeman, who is a board member. And she is resigning from the board hopefully as soon as we accept her resignation. And we'll meet to appoint someone new when we find out who that would be.
So when you say "we accept that resignation," would the board be the ones that are accepting that resignation or the city council?
This is a city representative, so...
Okay, so we would need a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept the resignation of Cosette Heeman and thank her for her service on the library board.
I'll second it.
Cosette, yeah, sure. Heeman?
H E M E N.
Okay, uh, motion's been made and seconded to accept Cosette Heeman's resignation from the library board and to thank her for her support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else for the library, Dave?
Well, there's an announcement of the used book sale.
Okay, we'll get to that in a little bit. How about the golf course?
No report. Doing fine.
How about the finance office? I think it's going as well as Tim Go.
I, I guess I have a question. Are we going to push back the budget until the November deadline?
My goal is to still keep it in September.
I think they passed the law, so...
Yeah.
We need a couple extra months.
Well, would waiting allow us to maybe see where some of this miraculous money is coming from, where it's gonna go? Still won't know it? Maybe not.
I was saying, maybe we would have some idea of what the community center expenses were to be here.
Well, understood.
It might not be under that law.
Is there... There's been discussion in the past about automatically depositing payroll checks.
Do employees still want it?
Well, and I, I've got a question. If all checks need to be signed by two individuals, maybe like the president or the mayor and one of the finance officers, how do you get around that with automatic?
I would still create a voucher, but what happens is a, a Nacho file is created and it's sent to the bank.
And that file does have a kind of a yay or a thumbs up, thumbs down from two people or not, or? We just, they just assume that...
That's where you would compare the vouchers to the actual withdrawal out of the account to verify those amounts match. The bank has no interest or authority to check if there's two signatures that go on those checks anytime. All they care is there's one. The two-person signature is just an internal control.
Which the owner likes.
Which the owner likes. But there, I mean, there's a lot of cities that do have direct deposit. It's just that not all city employees have accounts here. And some people would prefer to not have their check that way.
Okay. Well, I guess there are finance officer, office updates, reminders and updates. Go ahead with those or...
Uh, yeah. Library has their used book sale going on, starting today through the twenty-eighth. It starts on Thursday. So there is a fun walk. Tanya Miller will be down on Thursday, or the twenty-fourth. Anyway, that'll be the kickoff for this Tuesday, kickoff for the wastewater. She's gonna be meeting with some individuals. Uh, she did send an invite or she was going to invite the wastewater committee if you're interested in attending. It's basically to just kind of talk about the, um, the scope of the project in a little bit more detail. And for those that are interested, the chamber is hosting their appreciation, appreciation dinner. This year it'll be at the EMS building on September second. This is an event at the Hayward Hospital. They put the whole bill for that and supply, you know, they grill burgers, hot dogs, usually some chips. And then Labor Day.
And the meeting was the next day, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, well, let's move on to number ten, and that is the Alcestar Community Center.
Got a lot of sheet rock up in the west half of the building. Painting is probably ninety percent done on the outside. For some reason, they forgot or didn't do that part that's up with the HVAC and electrical equipment up on top of the roof. They made, they made, I talked to one guy and he said, "The only reason we have enough paint is because some contractor let them, let a contractor, he let the paint go back to the store and they got thirty extra gallons or what they, wasn't having enough paint to do the..."
That's, that's the drop box.
It's the drop box, I think.
Oh, I thought somebody ran into the building. So that was an accident that they had enough paint?
Yeah. Lonnie's got the, uh, the green, the practice green, all basically ready to seed. We're ordering irrigation stuff to put sprinklers around it. And that should be here next week or so. And, uh, starting the twentieth, which I think is next week. Yeah, I think it's gonna be next week, coming here Tuesday. The crew should be here to start saving the part of the cart, the cart paths.
And the cart paths take carts from, from the shed out to like T-box number one?
Uh, yes. The cart shed around the community center, T-box number one. There's also a little fork that goes to the west so that you're not gonna start like on late night where they do shotgun start.
Oh, yeah.
Some of them will go that way and around the different holes, so, but yeah.
They're not driving across grass?
We, yes.
That's a good point. Cool. Anything else? How about the fair board? Excuse me, Darla.
Well, we haven't had a meeting yet, but results, I mean, and from a few people who are down there, but it's the best they've had for years and years. That's good.
I thought it was well attended.
The attendance was up. Lions sold all their pies out by...
Did they really?
Saturday. Yeah, a hundred and eighty-some pies they sold by Saturday night at seven.
They ran out of...
Four aged and like...
Yeah, I know this is close. I tried to get something there. I went for another piece of pie. They had the best strawberry pie you've ever had. The pecan.
Personally, I still might send a pie to my, to thank you because they saved us the night of the tractor. With the...
Over by us?
Yeah, they sent them down and they were firm with it this time.
Yeah, they were, they were there while.
Well, and rightly so. I mean, it costs money to put that stuff on and...
That had to be a huge success. That...
That rest of the pole was huge.
Yeah.
Well, the bull riding, they were real happy with.
Were they?
But I haven't heard, you know, we don't know. I'm sure it's still gonna make the cost.
No, Bruce didn't, Bruce didn't think that it would make, it would come out, but, you know. I thought it was well attended.
But the commissioner watched the years on that one.
Didn't you think? More bleachers.
Yeah. That kind of got down like, uh, the third one, so that's...
I think that might've helped too.
Yeah.
John fit, John really liked it. John's mayor.
Oh, yeah.
He, he went. Cause I was, I was down with a migraine and he went. He said it was so fun.
Yeah, it was fun, yeah.
I think the thing is that it's a start. I mean, it's the kind of thing that makes people go, "Wow, that was pretty cool. Let's do that again." Except maybe if we have a few more bleachers, "Oh, that's a good idea. Why don't you donate a hundred dollars?" And you go to a hundred dollars, a little bill.
Well, I talked to Dan Weber and I said, "Can we get those extra bleachers?" And he said, "No, we're not gonna bother for twelve seats." That was his take.
I wondered, I figured somebody forgot.
No, he didn't forget. That was his response. Just said, "We're not gonna bother."
Twelve seats.
But there would be, there would've been
Yeah.
Three sets of them or six, six sets of those. So that would've been six seats. We'll argue that one another then.
That was a really well-run tractor pull-in, though.
Oh, very well.
Very organized.
Got over it decently, too. It's over at twelve oh five.
Cause I had two, two lanes.
That's cool.
The only, I talked to Janet. Janet was pleased with that. Of course, manpower became an issue. Just was not enough people. She was a little upset at a couple things that the fair board will hear about. The only thing she was a little disappointed in was the businesses helping with the supper because it was the same people. There was a fair board. And so I said, "Well, there's something that we gotta get out there a little bit more." You know, they send it to all the businesses and the only one that helped it was Pat from the Chamber of Commerce. Otherwise, it was all just fair board. And it was kinda hard to make all the connections. There wasn't enough people.
Well, Mark Daxter was there.
Yeah. Overall, no, very much. Did we get any applications?
Uh, yes, we have three or four. And then we have...
I have three back, two from the fair.
And we have some verbal, but we just don't have one back.
Oh, okay.
Encouraging, though. One thing I think that we need to address before fair next year is the whole water situation. And I know, again, if there're money coming out of the trees, let's get her done.
That'll be, that'll be addressed, Mayor.
Oh, and they had very good vibes about you doing the whole, your input.
That was fun.
They did like that you were down there. You did the opening and then you did the pee-wee thing.
Yeah, the pee-wee thing, that was, that was a riot. It was good. I think next year I would, if I was gonna do it again, I mean, you learn what kind of questions to ask, you know? Cause it was kinda like, "Well, I, I don't even know what to ask them." And so, "How? I know a little bit more." Asked one kid, "So what do you feed your pig? Pig food? Apples? Apples was a great answer. I said, "I'm sure he loves apples." It was fun. Well, good. I guess, uh, if there's anything more for the fair board, we would move on to what was seven A and is now, uh, it would be an executive session regarding property nuisance and, uh, it would be legal counsel. Three oh seven, I just, I would need a motion to enter into executive session for that purpose.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two dash three.
Three?
Right?
Correct?
Yes.
I'll second. Yes. And, uh, Dave, motion's been made and seconded to enter into executive session pursuant to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two dash three. Legal counsel. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Seven fifty-one P M. We are in executive session for item seven A. Okay, I'm gonna call us out of executive session at eight fifty-five zero P M. And the only thing we have left on the agenda is item thirteen. I will need a motion.
A motion to adjourn counsel.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the counsel. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Fine, well, yes. And we are out of, out of executive. We are adjourned at eight fifty-one P M.
Thank you for that.